Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, August 29th, meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for joining us, and let me read a few things before we start our meeting. In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business for the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call the item listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, and then those in opposition. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and whether they're speaking in favor or opposition to the item. Testimony tonight will be limited to three minutes per speaker. We have a lot of speakers in the room. We want to try to accommodate everybody. All items on public hearing will be voted on, all, after all public hearing, the Public Council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda for that date or for a future date may speak, and we'll do that next in September, open-mic night. So we have one agenda item. Teresa, would you help us by reading it?
It's placing a charter amendment on the November general election ballot that limits the mayor to three consecutive terms.
Introduce by?
Anyone wish to speak on this item?
I'd like to ask the city legal to come up and help us with a little background with this before we move forward.
Sure.
Jeff, why am I here?
Good evening. Jeffrey Patrick, City Attorney. To give you a little bit of legal background, let me begin by saying, as we went through this, we don't go through an initiative process to put a charter amendment on the ballot very often. I would say that there were some holes in the law department that we have identified that we'd like to ask the Charter Vision Committee Commission to take a look at and perhaps suggest some ways of filling those holes. But the legal process, why we're here tonight, which is a special meeting, is because when the petitions were turned in and actually validated fairly quickly, at that point, the agenda for the August 20th meeting was already done, and there was only one meeting that you had left in this month. Why that was important is, in order to get this on the ballot, so it could be voted on in November, this council had to act and ask the Election Commissioner to put it on the ballot by September 4th. September 4th is a deadline that's established under state law. It's on the Secretary of State's website. That's what the Election Commissioner is bound by. And so, you had the meeting for first reading on Monday night. You had to have a second meeting. You had to have a public hearing in order to vote on it, to submit it to the Election Commissioner by the 4th. So any time between the first meeting and the 4th, you could do that. You've got six people here tonight, and that's why this, that's why the special meeting, that's why you couldn't wait until your next meeting, which is September 10th, which would be too late to put it on the November ballot, which is what the petitioner, petition circulators had requested.
Counselor, question?
I have a question. I understand this is a ministerial function of the council. Could you explain what that means and what the result of the meeting needs to be this evening?
Right. And so when we look for law that defines what the process is, it's not covered under the state, the city code or the city charter. We look to the state constitution when it talks about municipal charters, and it says, once the signatures are validated, the City Council shall place it on the ballot. And so, because it's mentioned in the state constitution, it's not a step that you can skip, but it's something that must happen. So when the signatures are validated, the council as a whole must act to place it on the ballot. So I've had questions, well, what if one City Council person votes no? Are they in contempt? And I would say, I don't think so. It's a duty for the entire council. So if you give four votes here tonight, you've fulfilled your duty. You've placed it on the ballot. So the question may be with some people, what if I don't agree? And the answer is, it doesn't matter whether you agree or not, the council's job is to, is to put it on the ballot, to take that vote. So you have to give four votes here tonight because that's your job. It doesn't say, you may put it on the ballot if you agree with it. It's you shall place it on the ballot. And if I could follow up on that, then what can you do with this resolution? And there has been at least one amendment that's been suggested. The question I think people in the audience might have is, what can you change? You've got the petition that was circulated. The people that wrote that petition were very clear on what they wanted to accomplish. And I would tell you, you can't change their purpose and the language that they put in the petition, which was, the mayor shall not be qualified to hold office for more than three consecutive four-year terms. So if all of you wanted to change that language and take out the consecutive or make some other change, I would tell you legally, you can't do that. Can you do something to change this resolution? I think the answer is yes. And I've drafted at least one amendment that adds a couple of whereas clauses that further explains the process. That's something you can do. You can add that to the resolution because it doesn't affect the ballot language. The other thing that you can do is you can put a title in there. I think you have an obligation to put a title. The resolution before you just says charter amendment. It's very vague. Arguably, it would be more helpful if there was a title that described what the charter amendment does, and that is within your property.
So as a follow-up to that, let's just imagine that whatever time we finish here this evening, the council votes not to put this on the ballot. What happens next?
Well, it depends on what you do after that. I mean, I don't think you have to vote tonight. You have until September 4th. You could adjourn tonight with four votes. Someone could call a special, two of you could call a special meeting. You could come back, do it on September 4th. That would be fine. If we get to the end of the day on September 4th, and either you haven't had a special meeting, or you don't have four votes to put it on the ballot, then I think that the folks that circulated the petition would go to court. And how that would play out, it's difficult because the timing is so tight. I suppose if you adjourn tonight and say, we're not coming back, they could go to court tomorrow and try to get a court order, forcing you to do your job, asking for a writ of mandamus because it's clearly your job under the state constitution to put this language on the ballot.
Counselman Camp.
Mr. Patrick, what's the purpose of public hearing?
Purpose of public hearing is to let the people know what you're talking about, what you're voting on.
Isn't this, I mean, this is perfunctory. It says we shall vote.
But...
We don't have any options, and so I don't understand why you say, you said there's, we'd have a public hearing.
Because you have a public hearing on all legislation that comes before this council, and this is legislation. This is a City Council resolution. And so you have a hearing on every resolution that comes before you. This is certainly one of those. But I also would say that as part of good public process, I think we can all agree that we should have public hearings, we should have a transparent process. I would suggest that, or some people might suggest, it's particularly important for a matter that really goes beyond your ministerial duty and will be on the ballot for the people to vote on. Well, this is part of that educational and part of that debate process.
Can I interrupt just quickly, John? Apparently your mic isn't on, and I only jumped up so the city communications people could hear that and know that and try to work on it. Excuse me.
Thank you. It's on now. I apologize. Thank you. I, I'm trying to understand, you say all city legislation. Where does that come from, that we have to have public hearing on everything when we have to do a ministerial duty? We have no choice.
But I think that you still have that duty to have that public hearing.
You said you think.
Yes.
Where does it come from?
Well, I can go ahead, go through the City Council rules if you want me to come back to me. But we've always done that. I would think it would be an odd choice for something that's going on the ballot to say, we're not having a public hearing on that. Now, to follow up on that, this public hearing is scheduled for just one hour.
Yes, that would be my next question.
A significant portion of which I've already eaten up. Is it appropriate to limit the public hearing to one hour? And I think it is, in some cases. I think you, as a body, have control over your agenda as far as public input. I mean, you say every speaker is limited to five minutes unless you choose to give them more by asking them questions. That gives you some control over the agenda, so you're not here past 10 o'clock last Monday night. In this particular instance, where you're discussing one thing that's a ministerial function, so the presumption is you're going to vote yes, because you don't have a choice. And secondly, when the question that they're asking to place on the ballot is so short, it's one sentence, it's a pretty simple concept, I think it would be appropriate to assume that one hour be sufficient to discuss this issue.
What would be the appropriate topics of public discussion or public testimony here to keep it out of the political realm because of our, we're not allowed?
Well, certainly any member of the public that wants to come up and talk about term limits for the mayor of Lincoln, I think that would be appropriate. If they're opposed to that, I think that's, that's appropriate in public. If you're, if you're talking about the political aspect, you as elected officials are certainly bound by different rules. As far as, I would suggest that you are prohibited from advocating in a public place as a public official, one way or the other.
But we're also prohibited from using city resources, which is exactly what we're doing here. And I mean, the only issue here, I mean, there is no issue. We have to do this, period. And so, the subject of term limits, whether you agree with or disagree with what this petition drives said, that should be done outside City Hall, should it not?
I don't think that the City Hall, which is a place for the public to meet, is someplace where you're going to ban political speech. I think the, but I would, I would say the rules that apply to you as elected officials or frankly, apply to me as a city employee, are different than would apply to members of the public that come down to testify. They're limited, I think, to the item on the agenda, which is the term limit question.
But the question is, is just merely a vote to put it on the ballot. It's not the merits of whether we should have term limits.
When Counselman Camp finishes, Councilwoman Lamb had her hand up, then Counselman Eskridge, and then Councilwoman Gaylord Bear.
That was my same question, was isn't, the question before us is whether we put it on the ballot, not whether, what, with the merits of term limits.
Well, when you have a public hearing, I think that, that the public has an opportunity to weigh in, and I don't think it would be out of bounds for them to weigh in on the underlying question. Certainly when you have hearing on something like 13th Street, for example, they might be talking about their block, they might be talking about traffic flow within the city as a whole. Is this part of a plan to take all cars off the city as a whole? Well, that's not, wasn't in front of them last Monday night, but certainly if that's their concern, then I think it would certainly be connected to the agenda item that we, we had a considerable discussion about last Monday.
Thank you.
Counselman Eskridge?
I'm just concerned about time. You know, we gave an hour for this, and we need to get going.
Counselman Gaylord Bear.
To that point, we could potentially start the hour clock now, but I did want to clarify that when this question of public hearing or no public hearing came up in our last gathering, the clerk confirmed that all previous petitions putting forward charter amendments have had a public hearing, so to not do so would be deviation from the normal practice, and an odd one at that.
Those were different processes to put a charter amendment on the ballot.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say, I'm going to watch this closely, and if it gets into the political realm off of whether or not, you know, to get into value of the merits of term limits, I'm going to recuse myself because I don't think it's appropriate for any of us as elected officials to have that topic here. It's great to debate that, but that's outside these chambers.
I'm sorry, Counsel, would you say that again? I'm a little, so if, if the conversation becomes too political, you're going to withdraw from the meeting?
That's, yes. I just only, I'm sorry, it's not appropriate. I disagree with our city attorney. He thinks some things, but we're, by state statute, we're not supposed to conduct campaigning here of any kind, and we've got one single duty, and that's to vote to put it on the ballot. So that's the question.
I, before our meeting tonight, for people in the audience, I did have some similar issues. I'd like to encourage everyone to, we have a limited amount of time, to be as succinct as you possibly can to speak to the issue of amending the charter. Try to refrain from using political terms, political party names. Try to refrain from using City Council members' names, if you can. I'm going to encourage everyone to do that. This is an open forum. I cannot mandate. I cannot force you to do those things. If it does get a little out of control, I will ask you and then gavel you to do your best to refrain and remain cordial and professional and civil while we're in the chamber. So have we, where are we?
We could have the first speaker come forward?
We're ready for speakers, yes. If you wish to speak, please come forward. We have two microphones. The clerk has a timer. She'll set it, and it'll beep. When you have one minute left, I will remind you verbally, you have one minute left. Ms. Nichols, I think you want to ask a question, so you probably should have gotten mine earlier. So, let's go. Here we go. We'll start with...
Very good. My name is Kate Bowles, and I live at 4401 Calvert Street, Lincoln, Nebraska 68506. I'm here today as a taxpayer and a voter. I am also the state senator representing Lincoln's District 29. Per statute, I have followed the rules about testifying today. Statute 4914-101-02 states that public officials are prohibited from using public resources for the qualification, passage, or defeat of a ballot question. I use personal resources, including my personal time and personal computer, in the development of this statement. 4914 expressly does not prohibit me from identifying myself by my title or expressing my opinion about a ballot initiative. I am opposed to this ballot initiative and the process used to put it on the ballot. Those who signed the ballot petition would expect me to follow the rules and would hold me accountable if I did not. Transparency, accountability, and knowing the rules are an essential part of making democracy come alive. I expect nothing else of myself and nothing less of my city government. I would question that the language that was placed on the ballot, on the petition, was a little unclear regarding the way in which the process would impact the incumbent in this circumstance. Regardless, transparency is a priority, and I applaud those of you who voted to have this public hearing today. I would have been very disappointed had we not had the public hearing. While the City Council, as has been stated, has a responsibility to place the qualifying ballot question on the ballot, I believe you also have a responsibility to hold this hearing. I think it's a part of our democratic process, and it affords people like me an opportunity to be heard. In the legislature, every bill gets a hearing. So for the record, I believe that this ballot initiative is counter to the principles laid out in our constitution, and I am pleased to have the opportunity to express that. The Constitution, Article 3-4, states that in regard to an initiative or referendum, "All propositions submitted in pursuance thereof shall be submitted in a nonpartisan manner and without any indication or suggestion on the ballot that they have been approved or endorsed by any political party or organization." This initiative was submitted by the Republican National Committeeman, J.L. Sprague, and the Faith White, the Lancaster County Republican Party Secretary. I would argue that this is not a nonpartisan approach. I'll wrap it up. I respect others' time, but I would say that per the rules, I do expect the City Council to move forward on this and to place the initiative on the ballot after the completion of full and fair public testimony in this hearing. That's democracy. Voting on a ballot initiative is also a part of the democratic process, and I would urge my fellow voters to reject this proposal and those who do not respect good process, transparency, and accountability in placing it on the ballot. I thank all of you for your service.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hello, my name is Mike Pitts. My address is 7341 Pioneers here in Lincoln. And I just wanted to stand up here and be able to say that, in my opinion, Mayor Beitler is one of the best mayors that we've had in recent history. And it seems to me, and to a lot of people that I talk to in Lincoln, that the only reason that this initiative thing come up is the Republican Party couldn't find somebody to run against him and win. Now...
Please, please, let's...
This is getting political now. This is, if you're going to do this, I'm going to recuse myself and leave.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm not going to participate.
Counselman, I hope you will reconsider. Please continue.
Okay. I just basically wanted to say that, and as far as term limits, I don't know why this even come up, because in every election, in every candidate, there are term limits. If you're dissatisfied and think that a candidate's not doing a good job, then you go to the polling station and vote them out of office. You don't play dirty, dirty politics and come up with this right now, right at this time, when the next election cycle is coming up. And I would just ask each and every one of you to think about term limits before you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Next testifier, please.
Good evening, council members, chair, concerned citizens. My name is Larry Waxelman. My address is 7339 York Lane, Lincoln, Nebraska 68505. There's been a lot of contribution to this discussion over the last two to three weeks. I don't think I can add anything as far as statistics, facts, or background information, but I would like to bring a couple of items to the table. The longest-serving and current longest-serving mayors in the United States, the longest-serving, 63 years. The current longest-serving mayor, 59 years. Now, I don't know that Mayor Beitler will be able to catch either one of these records, but if he should, he's going to break some others in a significant fashion as well. Term limits for mayors is not a unique or unheard-of concept. Over 51% of the cities that have populations of 250,000 or more have established them. I'm not going to talk about the pros and cons of doing so. I am going to attempt to frame this action in a manner that I hope makes sense to everyone in Lincoln. During the years that Bob Devaney and Tom Osborne, who were at the helm of the UNO football program, the teams enjoyed great success. The entire athletic department in the university gained national notoriety because of that success, and rightfully so. Private funding increased for programs, the stadium expanded several times to accommodate ever-growing, ever-growing fan base, and academic programs gained recognition as student, athlete, scholars demonstrated capability both on and off the field. The city of Lincoln, under the highly capable coaching of Mayor Beitler, has increased or created a scorecard that parallels those accomplishments. Lincoln has been recognized nationally as a city that values creativity, hard work, and lifestyles that contribute to healthy and engaged citizens. The response to the 13th Street Plan earlier this week demonstrates the remarkable testament to that engagement. Private funds have played significant roles in the restoration of Centennial Mall, Capitol Gardens, and public art that dot the landscape of Lincoln. This demonstrates the support that exists for the quality of life that is merged in our community. If at any time during the tenure of Coach Devaney or Osborne, a competing Big Eight, yes, I did say Big Eight, team requested that they be removed from their coaching duties while constructing those powerful programs, Nebraskans and Lincoln inhabitants would have found the suggestion laughable. I'm not suggesting how coaches are hired and retained is any well-equivalent to how mayors are elected, but I am saying that if you remove one in the middle of a winning season, you're making a huge mistake. You shrink the city, you shrink the stadium, and you shrink opportunity. Thank you for letting me go a few seconds over.
Thank you. Any questions for this testifier? Next testifier, please. Mr. Scudder?
Thank you. I'm Earl Scudder, and I'm a 52-year attorney in Lincoln. My address is 4433 South 93rd Circle, 68520. And I'm here to address the term limits petition. And it isn't that I oppose term limits, as long as they apply prospectively, but the voters are entitled to know the rules when they cast their ballots. And petitions by voters are for the purpose of allowing citizens to have direct control over legislative and constitutional issues. As the previous speaker noted, the petitions are required by Nebraska Constitution, Article 3-4, to be nonpolitical and may not be approved or endorsed by a political party. As she also pointed out, the pending petition to term-limit the Lincoln mayor is illegally supported by Republican Party representatives and its spokesperson. Nebraska Constitution, Article 3.8, applies term limits prospectively to governors and state senators, counting years after adopting term limits. Applying term limits to years preceding the effective date of term limits would be retroactive and most likely would be held to be unconstitutional. The pending petition seeks to include pre-term limits years of mayoral service in order to disqualify the incumbent mayor from running. However, the petition is defective in failing to make it clear to signers that it would prevent Mayor Chris Beitler from running for reelection. Again, the pending petition seeks to prevent voters from choosing to vote for Mayor Chris Beitler, but it fails to disclose that fact to the signers of the petition. The pending petition is illegally partisan and unconstitutional and unethically and secretly restricts voters' rights to choose a mayor. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm glad I didn't test the time limits.
Thank you. Questions for the testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
My name is James Greason. I'm a retired administrator and professor from the University of Nebraska. And I'll leave to lawyers and the courts whether this goes automatically on the ballot or not. I'm just here to say that I think the idea of placing term limits on the mayor is a bad idea. In my experience as a university administrator, I've worked with a lot of different people. I think whether it's for a legislative position or for administrative position, term limits deny the accumulation of knowledge and experience. And I would cite, for example, in my administrative roles, I had a lot of dealings with the Appropriations Committee of the Legislature, and I learned that the value of having somebody like Senator Jerry Warner in that position of chair was extreme. Those kinds of insights and knowledge do not get acquired overnight. With regard to administrative positions, I feel even stronger, and I would turn to my university experience again. I would cite, for example, Father Hesburgh at Notre Dame, who served very effectively as the leader of that institution for 35 years. I would cite my former colleague here at Nebraska and a good friend, Steve Sample, who served for 19 years very effectively as the president of University of Southern California. I can say in my own case, I served, in my last administrative position, I served 20 years as the vice chancellor for Student Affairs, and I'm glad there wasn't some automatic limit on my time to serve there, because I felt I was just as effective in my last year as I was in my first year, in fact, much more so, because of the accumulated knowledge and experience. So my... So, my only point is that I think that term limits would be a bad idea for the mayor of Lincoln. And if, to the extent that this council plays a role in deciding whether this goes on the ballot or not, I would urge you to not put it on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this testifier? Teresa, are you setting your clock for two minutes with a one-minute warning, or...
Oh, three minutes.
So, when the buzzer goes off, the testifier is out of time, correct?
I'll set it for two and then I'll give a one-minute warning.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Mo Neal. I'm a retired faculty from UNL, and I live and vote in LD-27 and live on South Thirteenth. Thank you for the street thing. I strongly oppose this late-in-the-election-cycle attempt to add term limits to the mayor position in Lincoln. Term limits have the adverse effect of prohibiting most working people from running for public office, since they cannot afford to leave their jobs to do so without a significant financial stash. I believe in public service and the public servants who serve the public, not their political party. This petition is illegal interference by the GOP administration at the national, state, and local levels. The state GOP is trying to pull a Mitch McConnell, a delay and sabotage by changing the rules at the last minute when you cannot legitimately end, win. It is designed to prevent a major, to prevent an excellent mayor who had previously announced his run in 2019 from being reelected to a fourth term. Changing the rules after this announcement is political bullying and should be condemned by all the council members and the citizens. This petition has another detrimental effect, forcing a candidate to shift their focus in the middle of their campaign to fight off the dirty politics of their opponent's party. There is considerable funding being expended, expended in this that could be better spent on the candidate's campaign. This is sabotage. In late July, I was approached by a petitioner in Lincoln, and this person misrepresented the purpose of petition, stating it will remove term limits on the city council. They are required to read the description by law and did not do so, nor asked me if I wanted to read them. This was happening with other petitioners, as evidenced by the letters in the Lincoln Journal Star. This, to me, describes the whole process as corrupt. I understand this public hearing is required...
One minute.
And I know that the petition will probably be paced on the ballot if the council votes yesterday. Do know that the hypocrisy of the GOP is legend and will be remembered in future elections. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Ms. Heron, is that microphone?
I think, how does, does that work?
Works, sounds wonderful.
I'm Sally Heron. I live at twenty-nine forty-five Sherman Street. I myself am not in favor of term limits, because I oppose any effort to erode my voting rights by telling me I can't vote for someone with too much job experience. But I come today not to speak against term limits, but against this specific petition. This petition is a deeply flawed document from beginning to end, and the motives behind it are so obvious that the council should be insulted by its arrogance. The organizers of this hail mary pass are operatives of the Nebraska Republican Party who know that no Republican candidate can beat Lincoln's incumbent mayor in the upcoming election. Making a political weapon of the people's process is specifically prohibited in the Nebraska Constitution. It is therefore an abuse of the right to petition for an individual to be targeted, clearly the case here, because this petition makes the term limit retroactive. It is an abuse of the petition process that signature-gatherers did not clearly disclose the fact that this proposal was retroactive. It is an abuse of the petition process to make a standing candidate ineligible, so any new Democratic candidate has just a few short months in which to run. Even the ill-advised campaign to enact term limits in the legislature was not retroactive. Every person serving in the unicameral when the law was passed was eligible for two more terms. It is an abuse of the petition process for a handful of political operatives to bring a last-minute campaign unfairly rushing the process, giving no time for informed decision...
One minute.
Giving no time for informed decision-making by the public on the merits and through the city's Charter Revision Commission. If the issue of term limits is to be voted on in Lincoln, let it be done in a timely and orderly fashion in May 2019. I have heard that many rank-and-file Republicans do not approve of misuse of the petition process, and I hope any who speak here will identify yourselves so that I can say hello and shake your hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you again. Next testifier, please.
Mary Harries, twenty-eight forty South Thirty-third.
Welcome.
I've voted in every election in my life. My vote, I know, is what counts in choosing our elected officials. Political tricks by people who can't and won't play by the rules, and in this circumstance, I mean our charter, have no place in Lincoln. These same political operatives are the ones who gerrymander our districts, all because they have to win at any cost. Now, an all-time low of targeting a candidate, I strongly voice my opposition to the mayoral term limits and this attempt to unfairly target a political candidate. And I just want to say, this is Lincoln, Nebraska, and I've lived here my whole life, and I've been involved in the political process. My mother was a civics teacher. And the fact that my city council member is not sitting here and got up and walked out and aren't listening to the people that he represents in this chamber, I think, is abhorrent. And I urge my city council to not go through with voting yes, to put this on the ballot. I just, I, you know, with all the other testimony that has been going on here today, I just think it's reprehensible that this whole issue has even come up at all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you again. Next testifier, please.
My name is Ken Har. I live at eighteen oh eight Folkways Boulevard in Lincoln. And frankly, I'm angry and disgusted. The timing is so obvious here, and also the lack of the fact that it's not been extended to city council. If we really believe in term limits, why has that been excluded? But I've been in politics long enough to know that, and each party has these, there are party hacks who come up with what they think are clever ways to win elections without winning the hearts and souls of people. And in this case, it's a mayoral race when a party cannot find a candidate to run against a popular mayor. Well, it may backfire. Frankly, I feel this is an insult to voters. People are being counted on them not being able to figure out that this is an end-run, an evasive trick, a maneuver to win elections some other way than by giving voters the best available choices, and people will be confused. So, I believe that truly that democracy is best served by informed citizens making informed choices. Democracy is best served by good public servants who work hard for the people. Democracy is not well-served by clever political hacks who come up with end-runs. You have energized me. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Again, thank you. Next testifier, please.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Garcia. I live at seventy-six oh one West Rio Road in Lincoln, Nebraska, six eight five oh five. I stand here today disgusted by this resolution and by the term-limit valid initiative that was brought forward by a few individuals. In early August, I was deceived by a petition circulator by signing a petition to enact term limits. It wasn't until I researched it on my own that I realized what I had signed and was not what I, and was not what I was told. For Medicaid expansion, they read a statement that explained the petition and what voters were signing into. I thought this would be no different. The circulator was very vague and didn't explain these term limits were specifically for the mayor and that it would only affect Mayor Byler, who I feel has done great things for our city. I was duped. I signed a petition when I was in a hurry. I thought that the petition circulator would be honest about their intentions, because that's what I knew and expected. I thought what I signed was originally a good thing, but the way the circulator explained it was not even close to the truth. Myself and all voters expect better of our leaders than to flat-out lie to the people they represent. I believe this is a fundamental scam to take away my vote for the candidate of my choice for mayor. I know if this was done to me, there are probably hundreds and thousands or thousands of others that are out there with similar stories. I hope that sharing my story motivates others to come forward and explain theirs. Whether you like term limits or not, whether you like Mayor Byler or not, we can all agree that fair and honest elections are vital to our democratic principles this country was founded on. This is an attack on those basic principles we have often taken for granted. I urge the council to do the honorable thing and vote against this resolution in order...
One minute.
In order to keep the integrity of our elections intact. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please. And I would like to remind everyone, if you haven't already, please sign in at the podium when you're testifying.
My name is E. Wayne Bowles. I live at one twenty-eight North Thirteenth Street, number five zero six. I know of one other person who signed the petition and then realized afterwards they shouldn't have signed it. And obviously, it's interesting to see that other people have done that, too. The, I'd like to defend the Republican Party. Is that me? United States Senator and war hero John McCain was a collaborator. He wasn't a shenanigan guy. He was a collaborator. And my favorite presidents, Abraham Lincoln and Theodore Roosevelt, didn't practice shenanigans. They were collaborators. The, so, basically, what we need to do is bring honorableness back to the process, knowing that both sides, all sides, can be collaborators, as those of you in the city council are. And I would like to thank all of you for your part in making Sid, Lincoln, a wonderful city, and I hope, it would be my hope, that you could somehow escape being involved in this particular issue, but it sounded like, from what Jeff was saying, that you're stuck. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Bowles? Thank you again. Next testifier, please.
My name is Jenny Wright, or Virginia Wright, five five two zero Union Hill Road, apartment two zero seven, Lincoln. It has been said of me that I'm honest to a fault, and it's true. I am against this particular amendment, charter amendment, and I am against any strategy by anyone that has the effect of promoting mischief in our electoral process, minimizing voters' opportunity to vote. We have seen numerous examples here in Nebraska of that. The death penalty petition, which was worded in such a Byzantine fashion that people were not sure exactly what they were voting for. And when I stopped to visit with a petition signer, employee, he said, "Well, the voters have a right to vote on this." And I said, "The voters, the citizens, have had a right for forty years to vote on this through the legislature that has debated this, had members, new members, retiring members, et cetera, who have addressed it." He thanked me for my courtesy in discussing it. However, I think this is another example of mischief-making and attempts to confuse voters. It is not well-timed, except for political purposes.
One minute.
Thank you. And I encourage you to vote no on putting this forward. I think that would be sufficient.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from the council? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Chairman, members of the council, my name is Kathleen Neary. I'm a lawyer here in Lincoln. I raised my daughters here. My kids go to school here at public schools. First of all, I want to thank the members of the council that are actually sitting here. I am absolutely disgusted and dismayed that John Camp got up and walked out when there are members of his constituency here, just because he didn't like what he anticipated to be the content of their speech. So, to you, thank you. I appreciate it. When we look back on history, we know that there are many ways to steal an election. A poll tax, right? That's been effective in suppressing the vote of certain voters. Closing polling places in majority-minority districts has also been affected, divesting voters the right to vote. Gerrymandering, we see that all the time. But here in Lincoln, Nebraska, in 2018, Republican elitists have come up with a new plan, a brand-new, dirty plan to steal the election. Why? Because they know they can't beat Mayor Chris Byler in a head-to-head election. Now, what do I mean by this? They waited until Mayor Byler re-announced his reelection bid to circulate the petition. They drafted the vague petition. And these aren't just laypeople that were drafting the petition. This is J.L. Spray, who is one of the great political minds in this state. And if you believe that he drafted it vague, and he allowed it to be drafted in a vague manner just by accident, I got a bridge somewhere I want to sell you. J.L. Spray is a bright guy, a really good lawyer, and, for the record, a nice guy. Now, I may have missed it, Councilmember Lamb, but where on this petition does it say that it's retroactive? Does it? Be fair. Be transparent. Tell the voters the truth about what they're signing. Don't try to steal this election. Many voters, just like this nice woman who testified before me, said that she signed it when she was defrauded by this petition circulator. So, it started from the very top in the timing, and then it went down to the vague, the vague language, and to the petition circulators. One of the circulators talked to me and said, I said, "Well, I don't want, who does this apply to?" And he said, "Well, it doesn't apply to Mayor Byler, because he's only served two terms." Wow. Thank God I read the news. You know, so, I guess what, you know, I think the Lincoln Journal Star said it best when they said the mayoral term-limit petition is shameful. And I encourage you all to vote against this, because we're in Lincoln, Nebraska. We play fair. We play square. We don't steal things.
Questions for this testifier? Thank you very much. Next, please.
My name is Alyssa Sloan, and I live at seventeen twenty-nine K Street. As a young person, I am getting very tired of seeing political parties manufacturing laws in their own interests as opposed to the people's. This term-limits proposal is an attempt to manipulate well-meaning voters and the democratic procedure to essentially rig an election. Term limits is a bipartisan issue. I support term limits, but not when they're used as a political weapon. To avoid this, term-limit bills proposed across the country, as well as in the Nebraska Legislature, grandfather in current elected officials. But this term-limits proposal does not do this. This fact, in addition to its timing right before an election, makes it clear that this is an attempt to unfairly and undemocratically remove Mayor Byler from office. This mayor has served our city well, and there is a reason why we have reelected him time and time again. So, I want to strongly encourage everyone in this room and those watching at home to vote against this proposal. And I also want to say that I hope the voters of Lincoln are watching, and I hope they saw Mr. Camp's performance tonight. As an elected official, it is his duty to take every opportunity to listen to the public who voted him into office. I want it on the public record that the longest-serving council member, sitting on the council for almost twenty years, almost as long as I have been alive, walked... for almost 20 years, almost as long as I have been alive, walked out on a discussion about term limits. Thank you.
Please, yeah. Thank you, please. Next testifier.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Ferguson. I live at 3310 Serenity Circle. I just want to start out by saying that I'm 22 years old, and it doesn't take a ton of voting experience to know that what is happening right now is morally abhorrent. This country has prided itself for centuries on the basis that virtually anyone can run for political office and receive fair and equal treatment in the election. This proposal will remove the voters' right of choice. The petition seeks to change the game so that others aren't allowed to play. If this were to enter into law the way that these petitioners would like, Mayor Byler would be disqualified in November, leaving the Democratic Party crippled, trying to find a new candidate in a few short months. This effectively rigs the election for the Republican Party by imposing these underhandedly and quite simply cowardly tactics. In short, I simply ask for my right to choose between the qualified candidates. And I also just want to state that Mr. Camp, while, yes, he may be serving for forever, I don't think that it's right to walk out on your constituents when you are having a discussion about term limits, ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please. Mr. Marvin, did you want to use the overhead?
Well, if it pops up. If it doesn't, that's okay.
Well, I think we got that going.
My name is Dan Marvin. I live at 5918 Rolling Hills Boulevard. And just a couple of points. One, this is from the article from Monday's paper, "Republicans Fail to Eliminate Public Hearing on Term Limits." I think it's, this is a proper thing to have a public hearing on. And ministerial votes, one that I can think of off the top of my head is the mill levy. Every year, you have a mill levy that goes out six or seven digits. You vote on it. Can't vote other than that, but it's part of the public hearing, and you can let people come in and tell you anything you want. It's part of the public hearing, and you shouldn't make it where you're voting against having a public meeting on something like that. It's an agenda item, as Jeff has said. The other thing that I don't understand is I don't understand exactly, plus, by the way, I don't think we're having a circus here either. Second, as Mr. Camp had described this meeting, second, term-limit petitions, the newspaper published a date. It was August 20th. We're past that date. So, we're having to do extraordinary efforts to get this on there. We are having special meetings, something that I don't think I ever did when I was on the council. We're having compressed meetings, all of this in an effort so that this can make it on the November election. And whose interest does that serve? You know, it serves, perhaps, Councilperson Lamb's, might serve Councilperson Camp's interest to be able to do this, so, because they're potential candidates, and they could eliminate their competition. But I think that's an unfair way to be conducting petition efforts. I think it's a political ploy just to eliminate Chris Byler from the ballot. I also think it's interesting that Mayor Byler has brought this forward, and I think it's instructive for all of us. Why does Mr. Byler want to have this on the ballot? Mayor Byler probably wants this on the ballot so we can clear this as an issue. What would we have if we went to May, into an election in May, and this was on the ballot, and Mayor Byler's name was on there, and both of them passed? We wouldn't have a mayor. So, I think it's instructive to think of this in a way that, on one hand, it's a special interest group that's bringing this forward, and to Mayor Byler's credit, he wants to kind of clear this up so that at least we don't do damage and cause chaos to the community in May if both of these were to pass. I do think there's merit to providing some transparency and changing the language so that people who are going to vote on this, chances are, the vast majority of the people that go to vote in November are going to be looking at this and looking at the ballot language, and they're not going to know what they're voting on, just like petitioners didn't know what they were voting on. Thank you.
Thank you. We got a little off on the time there. Thank you for wrapping that up. Questions for the testifier? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Hi, my name is Amanda Gailey, and I'm a resident of Lincoln. I'm actually a constituent of Mr. Camp's, and I'd like to say, I believe he just abdicated his responsibility in leaving the room during this meeting. If it turns out to be the case that the council's hands truly are tied, and you have to push this forward, inter limited only to adding some whereas clauses, as the attorney explained at the beginning of this meeting, I wanted to offer a constructive suggestion of what those whereas clauses might sound like. So, I suggest you add, "Whereas the Nebraska Republican Party will not be content until they control every political office in the state, regardless if by legitimate or illegitimate means. Whereas the Nebraska Republican Party cannot identify a candidate capable of honestly defeating Mayor Chris Byler in an open election. Whereas the Nebraska Republican Party has a practice of deploying the personal fortune of wealthy party members to purchase policy objectives they cannot achieve through normal, honest, democratic means. So it is that two Nebraska Republican Party operatives have paid to fund the following policy to remove their competition from the mayoral race." Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Next testifier, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Schob and members of the Lincoln City Council. I am Mary Bocheld. I'm representing the League of Women Voters of Lincoln and Lancaster County, and we are here today to state our opposition to term limits. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, similar to the city council in some ways, that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties. We work to increase understanding of major policy issues and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. While we work for and support the active participation in government, we oppose instituting term limits because elections provide the opportunity for informed voters to choose who they want in offices and how long they want them to serve. The voters can choose to continue a candidate's term in office or to replace the incumbent with a new office holder. The arbitrary use of term limits removes this choice from the electorate and limits the historical knowledge in the elected body of officials. Term limits adversely affect the accountability, representativeness, and effective performance of the officeholders, and upsets the balance of power in the branches of government. Thank you. And if I can add one personal note, I was approached two times by a petition gatherer, and both times the petition was misrepresented.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Again, thank you for your testimony. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. My name is Gail Ogden. I live at 921 South 35th Street here in Lincoln. I believe in the petition process that is available to the citizens of this great country, yet feel that this position, this petition, subverts the democratic process, both in its timing and implications. As we all, I know, hope from our civics lessons, there are no term limits in the original Constitution of the United States of America, and it's this Constitution from which our state and cities model themselves after. Voters turning out to vote are the method of removing or retaining a person holding an office, and that's the way I think it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Again, thank you. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. My name is Misha Coleman.
Could you pull that microphone a little closer? It'll slide towards you, just direct over.
All right. Is that better?
That's better. Thank you.
My name is Misha Coleman. That's M.I.S.H.A.C.O.L.E.M.A.N. I reside at 1026 South 14th Street. The salvation of the state is in the watchfulness of the citizen. As a legislative body, I would think this council would welcome their constituents' commentary on the issues before them. Actively working to block public scrutiny is an enormous red flag. Even if I had no feelings about the specific issue at hand, I immediately become highly skeptical that anything wholesome is occurring. Even without all the sneaking around, I want to register my opposition to implementing mayoral term limits. I was a term-limit agnostic until I watched our state legislature implement them. I'm a bit of a political junkie. Maybe that is obvious, since this is the second time I've been in this room this week. I attend committee hearings and floor debate at the legislature in my free time, too. Perhaps the most relevant reason I objected to term limits is how obvious it was that when term limits were implemented in the legislature, they were being used against one particular long-serving public servant. It had nothing to do with the merits of term limits per se, but instead, the convenient hook or crook by which you dispense with a popular opponent. Councilmembers Camp and Lamb have both indicated an interest in running for mayor, and both voted to advance this item to the ballot without any input on record from constituents. I smell a rat. Councilman Camp, who is no longer here, apparently, said earlier this week that he was opposed to using his seat on this council to partake in political gamesmanship or to attempt to affect the outcome of an election in which he will be participating. Frankly, I cannot see how to view his vote to restrict public scrutiny on this matter as anything other than a method to grease the wheels of his potential mayoral campaign. The campaign for the mayor's office is already underway. The haste and furtiveness of this push, including from interested parties within this council, betrays how disingenuous and...
One minute.
Thank you. And ill-advised it would be to proceed. It is my hope that those interested in building a better democratic system will work to educate the public about the motivations for this move before November. I hope the citizens of Lincoln will see through this charade. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Good evening. I'm Donna Roller. I live at 2000 Twin Ridge Road. There is an old house with old doors. One antique door is a knob that opens a room, either knowing or unknowing supports the KKK and the America First. This smart knob thinks it could be a head knob. Another door has a knob that opens to a room where it thinks Southern Poverty Law is a hate group. Another door has a knob that opens to a room to retirement because just too many years of old ideas and good-old knob syndrome. Another door has a knob that is opened and contains the most powerful corrupt organization in the world, according to MIT political scholar Noam Chomsky. The moral rot and the corruption flows freely down to even the smallest knob communities, the organization that cheats, gerrymanders, and advances voter suppression. So, now the sore loser knobs want to change the rules because we knobs just aren't supposed to have nice things. The knobs are unhappy because they don't like following the rules. And so, let's get rid of the head doorknob limits and get rid of it, so it will allow the knobs in the moral rot corruption room to rain down on all the non-haters of the rooms of the house where the good knobs live. Now, all the knobs can be very appreciative for this analogy, for not using knob names entering into the public record.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you very much. Ms. Maura James?
Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening.
Hello and welcome.
I'm Shirley Maura James. I'm an attorney here in Lincoln. I hadn't planned on speaking today, but a friend of mine, who's also an attorney, just whispered to me that she was approached by a petitioner, by two different petitioners, who misrepresented the petition to her. And there's a recent decision that just came down this morning out of North Carolina about germandering that's headed to the Supreme Court. Now, my own district of 30, when I first moved here, was Lincoln. Do you know how many counties District 30, LD District 30 is now? Try three. Okay? So, if I wanted to run now for anything, like the legislature, I would have to travel three counties. Was that germandering? Hmm, let me see. Republicans in charge. Hmm, maybe. As a Mexican woman who appreciates her right to vote, I don't appreciate the Republican Party, who used to be a party of my people, because back in the day, the Republicans pursued us. However, in the '60s, things changed. So, bottom line is, if you're going to try to take my vote, at least do it in a way that isn't so obvious.
One minute.
In addition to that, if we're going to get into the business of stealing votes from voters, at least have a little sophistication, like the Russians and what they've done, even though certain people are in denial of it, I just want my fellow Lincolnites to be aware and to vote against this proposal, because if you can't win fair and square, get out of the game. Thanks.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Thank you. And we've reached our pre-scheduled time to adjourn. I'd like this person to testify, and then we'll move into a voting session.
Thank you. I'm Cinnamon Dokken. I reside at 1445 South 20th Street. And I'll be brief. I've been a business owner here in small business for 27 years in Lincoln. And, you know, things that have been said prior to my testimony have covered the ground pretty well. I also oppose term limits, but particularly in the form in which these are being handled. Something that I think maybe has not been said is that, you know, people are busy. People are very busy, working hard, and not everyone has as much time as they'd like to pay such close attention to the intricacies of city politics. And I feel that this process knowingly takes advantage of those people by putting something on the ballot that will deliberately be confusing and by choosing a method that has deliberately been misleading. So, that said, I do oppose this proposal. Also, I do want to say that I was here on Monday night for the council meeting, and I was very surprised at what I really feel is the shameful attempt to erase the public's ability to speak on this issue, that it came up that we were going to just make this decision because it was purely administrative, as Chairman Camp, or, excuse me, Councilman Camp suggested. Sorry, Benny. I just, I couldn't believe that that was something that would be happening here. I do think that the people deserve a hearing, and I thank you all for your time tonight in letting us all speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have to wear my chairman hat and say, "I'm sorry." Yes. Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who participated. We appreciate hearing from you. And now, we'll move into the voting session. Since this is a special meeting with one agenda item, I think we've already read it. Where are we? Someone needs to introduce it. Yeah. Who?
I believe it was originally introduced by Camp.
So moved. Thank you. I have a motion by Councilwoman Christensen, and a second by Councilwoman Lamb. This is a discussion of the motion, of the resolution. Yes, Councilwoman Christensen.
I have two motions to amend. The first one has been handed out to the council members. It's adding some language to the whereas.
Second.
Audience will read that language. It's beginning in the substitute resolution on line five. "Whereas the number of elector signatures required under the Nebraska Constitution have been turned in, validated and certified by the Lancaster County Election Commission, and whereas the Nebraska Constitution provides that because the required number have been certified, the city council or governing authorities shall put the matter on the ballot for the next general election."
We have a motion and a second on this substitute amendment. Is there additional discussion? As a substitute amendment, this amendment will take the place of the original resolution with the two extra passages added. Any additional discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold, absent. Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
Now, on amendment number two, I'll direct my colleague's attention to line 16 under the substitute mission, substitute motion. Mayoral, the title, okay? And I'm going to substitute this language under the title. "Mayoral term limits charter amendment that will disqualify the incumbent mayor from serving another term and to prevent future mayors from serving more than three consecutive terms." Second.
We have a motion by Christensen, and a second by Eskridge. Discussion?
I don't have that motion.
No, you don't.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yep. You don't have it.
Could you repeat?
And you'll be appalled when you see it, because it's got some scratchings all over it, so.
Okay.
Just for clarity, yes. I'd like to start, if we could, by starting... I'd like to start, if we could, by starting the language as it was, appears on the substitute amendment. The title of the initiative is Mayoral Term Limit Charter Amendment.
Right.
And that is now being modified to say-
Say, mayoral term limits charter amendment That Will Disqualify the Incumbent Mayor From Serving Another Term And to Prevent Future Mayors From Serving More Than Three Consecutive Terms.
And that was a motion by Christensen, a second by Eskridge?
Correct.
Additional discussion on the new language? Hearing no discussion. I'll ask you to call the-
Actually, I would-
I'm sorry. Yes.
Thank you. I think we've heard that the language is confusing. I think while this is a mouthful, it is-
It is a mouthful.
Definitely more transparent about the intention. And while we aren't able to make amendments to the petition language itself, this lengthy title at least provides that greater clarity on what the effect of this would be were it to pass on the ballot in November.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. While I recognize that a lot of people here have been frustrated and would like to see this type of language added. There were forty, over 4,200 signatures turned in signing this petition. Over 1,600 were for Democrats, 1,500 from Republicans, over 700 from independents, and 94 from libertarians. This was a nonpartisan effort. I realize that people are frustrated with the way it was brought forward or the attorney that brought it forward and so forth. But by trying to turn this into about this mayor, this mayor, I don't feel that's appropriate because this is about term limits when we put it on the ballot. Although today's hearing is about whether we put it on the ballot or not, and that's governed by the Constitution. This should not be turned into an issue that has to do with anything but the term limits that are required. Nonpartisan, these people have spoken twice. They spoke first when they voted in the Nebraska Constitution and allowed for the petition process. They spoke next in a nonpartisan voice when they signed these petitions and put them forward, and those signatures were validated. At this point in time, I don't think it's appropriate to add all that language. My experience with ballot initiatives is that they have been short in order to talk about the context of what is being voted on.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes, thank you. I guess I have to respectfully disagree. This amendment that Roy's proposed doesn't change the language of the ballot initiative. It can't. But what it does, it makes it clear. It makes it, makes people be able to understand and see what they're voting on, and we've already heard tonight that people didn't understand very well what they were signing. I appreciate Roy bringing it. I think it does make it clear for people to make an informed decision. And as to whether it's about the current mayor, you darn straight it's about, straight it's about the current mayor. I mean, he's, this, this impacts whether he can seek reelection. It's, it's pretty much all about him for the moment.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Mr. Kirkpatrick, would you help us for a moment?
Yes.
Thank you. Jeff, when the, the city received these signatures a little couple weeks ago, before they were validated, and this was drafted, the resolution was drafted. I understand that there were conversations between the city law and the folks who were bringing the petition. Is that, is that right?
Well, there was a letter that we received on behalf of the association that brought it. And it had a question for the city clerk. They requested a copy of something, and then there's a question for me. That wasn't a conversation. That was, and I responded-
Yeah.
-within a couple of days. I did have a conversation with Mr. Spray a day or two after they were turned in. I think it was the day they were validated, as a matter of fact, and he requested a copy of the resolution, which I provided to him immediately.
Okay. And at that point in time, did you, did the city assure those folks that what was going in this resolution was going to mirror what they intended to have done with the petition?
I think he called me in part because he had a concern about whether the resolution was going to reflect the language in the petition. And I assured him that I didn't think that either my department in preparing the draft resolution or the city council had the authority or the ability to change the language that they were inserting into the city charter. I haven't heard back from him since I sent him the copy.
Thank you.
A question?
Councilwoman Gaylor Baird first.
Is, we've heard tonight that people approached by petitioners felt that they were misled or that the intent of the petition was misrepresented. Does that in any way affect our choice to support, as a council, this, putting this forward?
My answer to that would be no. I mean, it's possible that fraud was committed in this petition drive. I mean, that happens. There are some people removed from ballots because there's false names on their petition that they circulate for their candidacy. But if that happened, there would have to be an investigation. This body is not set up to do that investigation. There'd have to be a lawsuit, or criminal action could be filed. I don't think any of those duties are within the duties of this council at this time.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kirkpatrick? Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second to amend the amendment. I mean, the amended resolution. With no additional discussion, I'll ask you to call the roll, please.
Sorry. What is the vote on? Is the vote on?
This is on motion to amend number two.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready? Would you call the roll on motion to amend number two?
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
No.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried four to one.
I'll also respond to Ray Boulder Camp.
Okay.
And so now we go back to the original, Councilwoman Christensen.
Yeah. And in regards to the original purpose here, is to put this on the ballot. And I understand why a lot of people would be not wanting to see this. We've heard why they don't want to do this. However, I know what would happen if this council decided not to. We've already heard. It would go to the district court. There would be a writ of mandamus. Essentially, the city council would be sued. And then we'd be forced to come back and vote it onto the ballot under threat of contempt of court. This would be the second time in two years this would happen, and I'm not ready for that. So I'm going to do my duty and fulfill my obligations on the state constitution, and I'll vote yes.
Other comments from the council? Councilwoman Gaylor Baird?
Echoing Roy a bit there, yes, earlier, the city attorney informed us that the council's affirmative vote today is obligatory. But please know that I do not actually support this term limit scheme. I'm deeply troubled by the way this scheme, which is neatly wrapped up in a shiny charter amendment, actually tarnishes what should remain sacred in our elections. Fairness. Fair elections are key to the people's faith in our democracy. I am confident, after tonight, that Lincoln voters will be informed about what this really is, an unprecedented and blatant attempt to manipulate an election process that's already underway.
Thank you. Councilwoman Eskridge?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Thank you. Thank you. And I want to thank everyone who came tonight. Many who testified indicated that this is a really bad idea, and I, for one, agree. And I'm not talking about term limits in particular. That's something that people can disagree about. My day job is in the legislature. I am an employee of the legislature, been there 22 years. And during that time, I've seen the impact of term limits on that body. Saw that Senator Chris Beitler was term limited out of the legislature during my time. I've seen how term limits has had an impact on the legislative body in terms of, in some respects, weakening that body, which is really important in a three-legged stool. It doesn't, doesn't always sit so even. And so, that, you know, that concerns me. But what really concerns me more than kind of the outcome even, it was the motivation for those term limits in the year 2000. It was, it was a direct shot at one of the, one state senator who had served his district for 30 years. And he would be there for 30 more years, but for term limits. And that was recognized. But even there, when term limits came into effect in the year 2000, that senator then was, was up for election at the same time, was able to seek reelection in four years, and then left office in 2008, eight years after term limits went into effect. So similar to that term limits proposal targeting one senator, Lincoln's version is taken from the same playbook. But it has a little different wrinkle to it. This time, the mayor of Lincoln is the target. But instead of looking at it prospectively, putting out another, that this would go into effect after he completes his next term, it says, no, this is retroactive. You can't run again. That's wrong. You know, it's football season. It's like going into a game, and all of a sudden, you get out there and the teams are ready to go, and the ref says, no, no, I'm sorry, guys. You can't play. It's in the rules here somewhere. You're not able to play. That's what we face here. It's unfair. It's partisan. And it threatens the very collaborative nature of the community that we are. As we've heard from our attorney, we don't have a choice. This is a ministerial duty that we have as members of council, something that has been brought to us, signed by the people. It has to go on the ballot, and we will trust the people to do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lamb?
Thank you. I'm disappointed in my colleagues that went ahead and talked about their views on term limits because we were instructed by our attorney prior to this that that was not to be the discussion. This is about putting this on the ballot, and that is our obligation. We have to put this on the ballot. This is mandated by the people of Nebraska and by the fact that 4,200 people plus signed, validated signatures, actually about 5,700 were turned in, over 4,200 were validated, which is about 500 more than what's required under the Constitution. I think this, however you feel, or however any of us feel about the termlet issue, doesn't really matter. This is doing the will of the people who put into effect the Nebraska Constitution and who signed the petition and turned it in. And although I do realize that a couple of people have testified feeling that they didn't thoroughly understand what they were signing because of what someone said, they, they could have read it. I mean, my attorney always tells me to read things, and in fact, I read things all the time before I sign them, which makes some people kind of crazy because they get kind of long. But the fact is that we heard from a couple. And we, but we received over 4,200 validated signatures. And we're absolutely right to vote to put this on the ballot, and we don't have a choice, and we don't want to be sued. It's that simple. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to make one statement before we go to the vote. I'd like to thank everyone who came out tonight and your participation in the process. I'd like to thank my colleagues as we try to move forward. Thank you. Would you call the roll, please?
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I move adjournment?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and second. Would you call the roll, please?
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Schob?
Yes.
Motion carried five.
We are adjourned.